To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everyone for coming this evening. Why don't we start with the roll?
Trusty Guyer.
Here.
Trusty Spurling. Trusty Baumann.
Here.
Trusty Youngerman.
Here.
Trusty Marasek.
Here.
Trusty Betzinger.
Here.
All right, we do have a call in this evening. Moving on to the first, our first item tonight is a swearing in of, I think it might be the first, for the first time we've ever done this, multiple police officers, which I know is very welcome. So, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like you said, it's the first time we've done this since the onset of COVID. Staffed out, it'd be great to start this tradition all up again. Tonight, we're going to do three of our most recently graduated officers. First of all, I'd like to introduce Officer Damian Woods. Damian comes for us from the Gary, Indiana Police Department. He started out there. Before that, he graduated from Homewood-Flossmore. He then attended Universal Technical Institute where he graduated a degree in industrial technology. Just past December, he got married to his beautiful wife Gabby. And I understand Gabby can't make it tonight, is that correct?
Delayed.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Delayed.
Delayne, okay. I'm sorry, excuse me. Delayne, messed that up. So, but he does have here tonight his mom, Tadeka, his father, his mother-in-law Nicole, father-in-law John, brother Connor, and Damian's grateful to be here. And if I can ask him down to get sworn in.
Congratulations.
Maybe I won't mess this one up if I have my glasses. Next, I'd like to introduce you Kane Culver. Kane came to us, he graduated from Westboro High School. He attended Western Illinois University, go Leathernecks, graduated with a degree in law enforcement and justice administration. All three of these guys are in their FTO program. Hopefully, they'll be finishing soon. Today, he is joined by his mom Elizabeth, father Brandon, his girlfriend Peyton, his brother Jason. Kane's interests off-duty include fishing, golfing, and bowling. Ladies and gentlemen, Kane Culver.
Raise your right hand if you have to make. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And before I introduce the last one, I'd like y'all just to take a moment and realize there are several other police officers here that came in support of other fellow officers tonight. I would like to give them a round of applause, too, please. And now, last but not least, I'd like to introduce you to Kevin Lesner. Kevin graduated from Hoffman Estates High School, attended Western Illinois University, again, go Leathernecks. He entered the business world, spent many years working in management before he decided to pursue his dream of becoming a police officer. Kevin attended the suburban law and enforcement academy, like the other two. He'd graduate in December. He's now in his final training program. In the audience tonight in support of Kevin are his fiancee, Gabby, who is a Glendale Heights police officer, his mom Tammy, sister Ashley, and sister Amanda. Kevin enjoys traveling, friends and family in his off-duty time, and he spends a lot of time on water when he can, hopefully when it's warmer. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Kevin Lesner.
Raise your right hand if you have to make. I say your name.
I, Jack Lesner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, we have, we do have one more item for public participation, but I know we have a bunch of officers here that need to get back. I do appreciate, I say this every time, showing your support for your comrades here today. So, officers, commander, deputy chief, I appreciate it. If you do need to leave, we won't be offended. We appreciate your help. All right. So, let's move on to the next item for public participation today is a recognition that, in my opinion, is long overdue. It's the recognition of Atrevite's induction into the Illinois Maid Program. I know I have some remarks here, and then we'll invite her group up for some photos and presentations. As a staff and a board, we talk about what makes Montgomery unique and how many amazing things are happening right here in our community. From what is manufactured in our industrial properties to the athletes playing at Stewart Sports Complex and even the best macaroons in Illinois made right here in our community. To Jackie and the Atrevite team, we are beyond proud that you chose Montgomery, and you are not only now Montgomery Maid, you are officially an Illinois Maker. For those of you that don't know, only 30 small businesses receive this distinction each year, and only the fifth in our region joining well-known businesses such as The Worst Kitchen, Hardware, and Enduro Coffee. Essentially, this puts Jackie and her shop on the map as a highlight and a tourist attraction for the state of Illinois right here in Montgomery. On their print and digital marketing on the enjoyillinois.com, Atrevite Confections will now be featured as a tourist destination. Jackie, you are so deserving for this award. From the decadent pastries, macaroons, handcrafted coffee drinks, teas, pies, crepes, and my wife's favorite, the raspberry pistachio croissants, we had it this weekend, and she said, please don't ever change the recipe on that. So, with that, congratulations and welcome to the Illinois Makers Class of 2022. And come on up. Sorry, forgot to state this before I began. We do have Court Carlson with the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau with us today to present the Illinois Maid.
Is this probably Illinois Maker? Illinois Maid, I'm just glad we're local. Illinois Office of Tourism. Also, for the very first time, we've done this small thing for your foot up somewhere at Atrevite Way to display wherever you look, just not on a road.
Congratulations. Everything you make is wonderful. She's, it's been, what, like seven, six, seven years?
And then, if you guys will, will oblige, if you would like to take just a few-minute break, take some photos, and then we'll reconvene in a few moments.
Oh, yeah. Wasn't that so cool?
That's awesome.
I love it. It's so cool.
All right. Probably just come right up here. Ready? I'll come up here.
Yeah, can you come up so you're not, like, behind? Yeah, okay.
Does that work? And one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. And actually, we're in the one. One, two, three. All right, so looking here, one, two, three. One more here, one, two, three.
Thank you so much for nominating us. I was trying to figure that out.
Oh, I know. Dallas, my son.
All right, so, who wants to keep going? All right, let's call the meeting back to order or resume the meeting. Move into the consent. Actually, I can't skip public comment. Is there any member of the public that's here wishing to make public comment this evening? All right, is there anybody? Oh, you are. Perfect. You want to come down to the podium?
Sure.
Introduce yourself, state your name and address, and the two minutes is yours. Thank you.
Since I'm very new to this, we do it very often. My name is Sharice Johnson. I'm here to say thank you because of the contract that was written and revised many different times in reference to the land called, we call it, the, of, of, early and, um, purple. And, um, we are going to present a print and also a contract. Still can't do this. Okay, here we go.
Is it on, Debbie?
Is it on?
There you go.
Okay, here we go. All right. You want me to repeat anything?
No, it's fine. Just go ahead.
So, that's why I'm here, and my clients are in Miami. He's been up once for a meeting in August, I believe, August, August, I think it was, right. And so, I spoke with him this evening. We can put him on conference if you wish, but since the print is not ready and there's been a delay, what can I say? It's January. Then, we will get that to you as quickly as possible, as well as presenting a contract. And the contract will be written up that we will have a closing as early as March the first with all the due diligence. Do you have questions?
No, I know the board has been apprised to the situation in this, as you guys have progressed, and I think we patiently await the submittal of the plan.
Yes, patiently. I was so hoping it would be done this evening, but it...
That's okay. And when you do submit that, staff will review it and circle up with us, and we'll get back to you.
Yes, I appreciate that very much. I appreciate Steve Youngerman and his help, and also Jeff and Sandra, or Sonia, excuse me, in reference to this. And thank you very, and have a good evening.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. All right, is there anybody on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. All right, anybody submit?
They did not.
Perfect. All right, moving on. The consent agenda, I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the January 9th Village Board Meeting, executive session minutes for January 9th, the accounts payable through January 23rd, the accounts receivable for December of '22, the refuse report for November of '22, ordinance 1997 granting the expansion of a special use for outdoor storage. This is at 1975 Alcott Road, second reading.
So, move.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes. All right. And that carries five zero? That's a question, because I was asking. That was five nothing? All right, perfect. I had to ask her a question. I'm playing one step ahead here. 5-0? All right, perfect. I had to ask her a question. I'm playing one step ahead here. All right, moving into items for separate action. The first one is Resolution 2022-023... Sorry. 023 approving a settlement with ComEd. Attorney Julian.
Okay, yes, thank you. Recently, one of the consultants that the village has hired to audit its accounts has discovered funds that had been owed to the village, so the attached agreement just approves the settlement for the payment of those funds. With that, I can take any questions.
Perfect. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Sure.
Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
No.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries 4-1. Thank you. Item B is Resolution 2023-002, Accepting Water, Stormwater Management and Landscape Easements and Right-of-Way for Rochester Drive, Transline, and the Village of Montgomery. Sony?
Thank you, President Brody. Transline was approved by the Village Board back in May of last year. As part of their approvals, they were required to finish the dedication of the stormwater easement, the stormwater area that was designed on the site. Additionally, they were required to finish the cul-de-sac at Rochester Drive, which does require the dedication of the rest of that right-of-way. There's also a private fire loop that's been having to put in for this particular development, which needs to be placed in an easement. So, we have two plats before you. One is a plat of easement that includes the water main loop as well as the stormwater easement, and the second plat is the dedication of Rochester Drive.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
If there's no further discussion, go ahead and call a roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. Item C is PSA with EEI in the amount of $108,442 for the North River Street Water Main Replacement. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brody. So, as the village continues to move towards the Lake Michigan water source, the village has adopted a non-revenue water reduction plan. As part of this plan, the village has identified key elements such as water main replacement. The first project as part of this plan has been identified. The Village Board accepted the bids for, I'm sorry, accepted the contract for this project to King County Excavating. And so, this professional service agreement with EEI will be for the construction, observation, and site surveying for this project. So, if there are any questions, I am happy to answer them at this time.
Thanks, sir.
Motion to approve. Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries 5 to 0. Thank you. The last item for separate action is Resolution 2023-003, Reaffirming Selection of Lake Michigan as the Preferred Water Source and the DuPage Water Commission as the Preferred Water Supplier for the Village of Montgomery. Engineer Wallace.
Thank you, President Brody. This item is being proposed this evening to reaffirm the village's position on going to Lake Michigan as a preferred water source and using DuPage Water to provide that source to the village. During the process of hearings with the IDNR relative to our allocation permit, DNR wanted to make sure that the Village Board and the village understood clearly the distinction of having a permit for an allocation through the Lake Michigan program, and that there are certain requirements that come forward with that, such as DNR being able to impose rules on the communities as needed. So, there's a loss of autonomy that the village has enjoyed with running its current water system. So, in order to make our application for allocation permits complete as possible, we're recommending approval of the resolution, consistent with the discussion we had at the special board meeting on January 12th this evening. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thanks, Pete. All right, items for discussion. The liquor license request for this evening has been postponed to a later date due to the applicant. So, you will see that hopefully on a future agenda. Is there anything new or unfinished from anybody?
Yes, just one item. The Polar Plunge is coming up March 5th, so kindly, if you can, support the Montgomery Police Department in raising some funds for the Illinois Special Olympics, which is a great charity, and they do a lot of work with them, and it's a great time. So, please, go to the website and support the PD with donations or spread the word. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you. Anybody got anything? Okay, future meetings. The next Village Board meeting will be Monday, February 13th at 7:00 PM in this room. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And we adjourn. Thank you.